Folks, welcome to the regular meeting of council Monday, May 28th, 7:00 PM. We acknowledge we are meeting on the shared traditional lands of the Coast Salish people this evening as we undertake our meeting. First item on our agenda would be to let the folks in the audience know if they are here for discussions around the second reading of the OCP. That will be a special meeting of council next Monday at 7:00 PM. So, oh pardon me, 6:00 PM. Let me get the right date on that, or right time. 6:00 PM, June 4th, for special meeting of council in regards to the second reading of the Callwood Official Community Plan. With that, looking for approval of our agenda?
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. For any of the members of the public that might have picked up on, there was an error made in the reading number of our bylaws this evening. It's final reading for most of our bylaws, not for second and third that we did last week. Public participation, welcome. Thanks for coming. It's your time, if you want to come to the podium and make any of your concerns known, happy to hear from you.
I stand before you to correct some misinformation that's been given in the public in these council chambers. And I don't like to do this. I'm doing this on my own. I'm Dave Saunders, 813 Pairs Road, taxpayer in Callwood for a long time. But I think it's necessary to air it, get it out in the open, and move on. So there's been a lot of talk about these, this group that's been formatted about the OCP. And I just want to be clear, councillor, no. You raised the issue of backdoor meetings. There's not been one single backdoor meeting by our group with this city at all. I don't represent the group, but I can tell you, as a former person that sat right near guys' chair, there hasn't been. So to insinuate that there has been is not right. And I'm sorry, councillor Day, you referenced special interest groups, or you referenced that we shouldn't cater to special interest group. This is not a special interest group. I have put the city on notice that it isn't. It's made up of businesspeople, stakeholders, developers, sport groups, citizens, renters, youth, and most importantly, seniors. And they are to be respected. Many of them are in the audience here this evening. So, again, I'm not representing that group by any means. I asked, I got asked to format a group, create a liaison committee, which I did meet with the mayor on, and I did that. And I did that in the best interest of rolling up our sleeves, working together, and looking at the vision that was expressed very eloquently by our public. Staff did an amazing job putting out the OCP in a process, but in my opinion, it hasn't been formatted properly to get to the nuts and bolts, and I'll talk about that further. But right now, I'm speaking on behalf of my family. We've been taxpayers before in corporation. We've been one of your longest businesses of 36 years. We recently sold a business. We reinvested a ton of that money right back into our community. We have the Saunders Family Foundation that works with citizen groups in our committee, community, but most importantly, families in need in our community. I represent 13 members of my family here this evening. So I'm not a special interest group. So when I say that we have some concerns in relation to the OCP and the finalization of it, I expect this council to take me serious. Not call me a special interest group. Thank you, and I'm sorry, I'm a little bit upset by it. I expected better. Thank you. Getting to the OCP and where it started, I want to clear the air. It started in 2014 by a staff report, Mr. Alden Haldenby, very well-respected planner. It's a 23-page document endorsed by many sitting on this council right now. It was a conventional, municipally structured OCP process. I don't know what went on since 2014 because I've been doing my own work. But I do know that you started again back in 2016 with basically a three-page document. And you created a brand-new structure which recognized that it wasn't a traditional form of structure, and the terms of reference was very loose. It wasn't confined to a municipal standard. In fact, it referenced a strata standard. I participated in the end part of those OCP processes and sat on that committee. Any member can become a committee member. I can tell you very clearly that there is no terms of reference given to the committee members, nor was there any financial documentation of the effects of the vision that would be expressed by our good citizens in any form or character in that process. The stakeholders were invited, not all of them, to a luncheon that turned into workshop expressed by the city. I can tell you very clearly that mayor and council were not invited to that meeting. That wasn't that stakeholder group. I don't know why. The committee chair wasn't even at that meeting. And there was probably 30 people in attendance that looked at that first draft OCP, and they had major concerns. And when we brought those major concerns to the city, it was turned into an us against them, which is wrong. It's not working together. It was turned into an us against them, and that's wrong. And that wasn't on behalf of those 30 members. I don't know why it turned into that. It should not have. I think council and the committee chair should have been there at that meeting. At that meeting, we were told to get our stuff in, our concerns in, within a week because it was going to the first draft of the OCP. We were quite shocked by this. Some of us got together some information and tried to submit it on time, but then we quickly realized that's not the best way to work with this OCP. And in fact, if you look at the terms of referent on the three-page document that started it in 2016, once you gave first reading to that document, all public participation ended. That committee ended. So council had no means to go back out to the public with that draft document that had so many concerns, not raised by that group, but also there was, I think, 30 pages of concerns raised by several committee members. Some have been addressed. That's great. But to say that the document or the OCP process is finished and that you're moving on and going past into more readings, I think is inappropriate. I think you have to go back out to the public. This group that some are here, but also my family, we want to work with you guys, work with our great staff, on that vision that's been expressed by our citizens, make sure it actually works within the confines of the new tax structure this brand-new government has laid on us. I want to get away from the OCP because there's so many unintended consequences affecting affordability of our housing market for the city of Callwood and our citizens, our youth, more importantly, our seniors. That's where I want to concentrate on right now. And this may not be fun, but something that I sat in that chair and looked at when I was mayor, when the city was just about bankrupt, and we had to hit our citizens with a 17% tax increase. And that wasn't because of good planning. It was because Lehigh pulled out. We had a whole bunch of other different factors, but we all worked together. We rolled up our sleeves. We created a vision, and that vision was to be expressed in five major centers in our city that would compensate taxes and alleviate taxes and create an affordable city. The OCP doesn't. We have to work on that. I bring to your attention, I've just done some real small calculations. We're looking at probably about a 24% tax increase in the next three to five years. And I'll start, and I do want these questions answered. And whether we all answer it together in a public forum, maybe that's what's needed so we all understand the issues. I understand them better than a lot because I've sat in that chair. I know what goes on behind the scenes. But let's start with West Shore Parks and Rec. There's a current owner fight, in my opinion. Who pays what? We really don't know. We have to get that figured out. Those numbers are huge. Currently, right now, Langford pays a huge portion of that, but also they have created facilities that myself and my family and many members of their family up here in this audience and in this council chambers don't pay for, yet we use free of charge. Maybe for registration through minor sports, but we use free of charge. We have to work on that. Number two, the cost of the new tree bylaw to both homeowners and the city to bring in and enforce, including the cost of the forest management plan that's just been announced. The tree bylaw is significant. I know it. I've worked in it for 30 years. It's significant to the seniors and youth and people in our community. It's not small potatoes. Number three, the tax effects of the decision to reduce five possible town centers into two, the tax effect that draft OCP Site Adaptive Planning, DP standards, will have on our BC assessment values on many properties, which I understand, there's probably three or four members in the audience that are already starting to challenge the BC assessment for next year. Whether they will be successful or not, successful or not, I don't know. But they have a pretty good darn argument, in my opinion. It has to be a bit of a worry. The cost of the new CRD Affordable Housing Plan, I don't know those numbers. I tried to get those numbers. I don't know what it is, but it will affect us. Number five, the local sewer service tax implications from downzoning of properties. Currently, all residents are paying for sewage treatment and will be, but with downzoning, only those connected or have the ability to connect will be paying for the servicing maintenance. But now I understand that may not be correct as well. We still don't know the true CRD sewage treatment costs as they have not been fully determined for our residents, what, when, and how they will be implemented. I also found out more today on our capacity. The city of Callwood ventured down the road that we withdrew our capacity because we were going to go it alone, do it ourselves, and we withdrew our sewer capacity at CRD. We're now down to 4.7% megaliters, as I understand it, and in the reports that I just received today from engineering, they don't think we'll have enough capacity till 2020, under 4.7. When staff was asked for clarification on this, because one of the developers was quite shocked that has paid into this for years, they weren't able to answer. That answer needs to be clarified. If we need to go back to the CRD, are we able to go back to the CRD and ask for more capacity? Because the capacity envisioned by our good public, even in this draft OCP document, is not sufficient. We need to clarify that. I understand that Langford took a good majority of that extra capacity. We need to create a relationship with Langford again if we need to go back to them and say, can we borrow some capacity to even encapsulate the current OCP vision of our good public. As part of that, the Heartland landfill is part of the CRD sewage treatment project as it is one of the largest contributors to liquid part of the sewage system through leachate. I know this because I'm the former Heartland land chair. It's all the waste committee chair. I asked about the treatment. I asked about the lagoons. The province has mandated that leachate be treated. The cost of this has never been given to our public. I've asked for it. I've never been given it. It hasn't come across as council tables. It's going to be hit, not only in Callwood, but all the west shore municipalities. Nobody knows that cost. I don't even know if it's legal to do what they're doing. The legality of taking leachate and pumping it into our ocean is no different than the Shawnigan Lake mess that happened up there, where we now have an MLA that champion the cause that no leachate can run from a landfill dump. So I don't know how we're getting around those regulations federally when the private landowner up in Shawnigan couldn't do the same. Eight, there is a new Callwood IT department that has proposed a continuing 1% tax lift. Nine, Callwood still does not know the true cost of running the city, especially in relation to public works. The city is legally bound to do an asset management plan, which will look at the above, and is also legally bound to start, create reserves for the replacement of that city infrastructure, west shore parks included. We still don't know that. Number 10, really important, the new related MSP, sorry, MSP employer's tax will hit the city employees, but will also involve west shore parks and rec, the school board, CRD staff, of which there are all the requisition on my taxes. We don't know those numbers. 11, the CRD directors just gave themselves and the management staff a raise. What is that dollar figure? I don't know. What I also don't know is, I can't give myself a raise if my city raises my taxes. I don't see, and I wouldn't, and I'm sorry, I wouldn't have not, I would not have done it at the CRD table. If I raise taxes, I can't all of a sudden give myself a raise. I don't think public officials should be able to do that as well. It should be coming back to this public table for discussion. 12, in the current city budget, of which has been recently adopted, there are also many other expenditures that need fleshed out to see if they will be an annual or one-time events. I haven't even gone through those. So when I say 24% over the next three to five years, I mean it. But what I mean more in this conversation is it's not us against them. That communication has to stop, and we all have to roll up our sleeves and work together for the betterment of the city. And if the OCP vision that's been expressed by our good public is that document, how do we get there to actually make it work? Because right now, in my opinion, it doesn't. And we need more public discussion to do that, and we need leadership to say, enough, let's go out to the public, let's have that really hard discussion in a public forum. That's what that group in the back wants. They don't want it behind closed doors. They want it in a public forum. That's what I want in a public forum because then it gets resolved. And I'm sorry that I had to stand up here and say this. I would rather be outside enjoying my garden, and I didn't want to come back here and do this. I respect each and every one of you. I respect staff. Let's stop this us against them and work together for the betterment of our great city. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else in the audience that has anything? We have like one minute left before I have to move on with the meeting, but I certainly do and/or will open it up for public again after conclusion of our agenda items. Anybody, anything? Seeing none, then we will move on. Thank you. Mayor's message. I do have a few notations to make. The draft Callwood 2017 Annual Report is available for public review. It is on our Callwood website under Annual Report. IACTI is having their annual picnic, June 7th, at the Machosen Community House at 6:15. Callwood Fire Department has its annual open house happening Sunday, June 10th, from 10 until 2. And the Q Center Summer Market starts as well, June 10th, from noon until 4:00 PM. It will be up by the library at Wanda Fuka Grounds up there, so looking forward to having that return. They will also be providing a beach street market down at Eats and Beats on July 7th, which is our seaside adventure. Anything else from council? Councillor Day?
Just the Chair of IACTI asked me to pass along just a little reminder about the picnic that you did mention. It is a community picnic, and everyone and anyone is welcome to attend. And I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew they were very welcome. Doesn't matter if you're a senior, a person with a disability, or having no disability at all, just want to be part of the community. Feel free to come along and join us. There'll be a little bit of music, a little bit of fun, and hot dogs and goodies.
Anybody else? All good? Moving on then, looking for adoption of one set of minutes from May 14.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, your correction.
Sorry, just one issue that I noticed, and I could have lost my mind, but I think that I was not the mover of emotion, so that's why I wanted to fix it. Sorry, now it won't come. There it is. It is on page 22, under 7.3 regarding the Nob Hill Road closure. And I don't think I made that motion, so maybe we can check and just be sure. Maybe I lost my mind and I did, but...
With that, all those in favor of the amended? Posed, motion carried. Receipt, please, of one set of minutes from Emergency Planning Committee, March 20.
Second.
All those in favor? Posed, motion carried. First up on our agenda, Amanda Evans, Program Manager from the Greater Victoria Green Team. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you so much for having me. Let me see if I know how to do this. So this presentation, I'm going to highlight a little bit about our program, some background, some of the impacts we've made specifically in Callwood, and future plans. So again, thank you so much for having me here tonight. The Greater Victoria Green Team, we're a regional-wide environmental volunteer program that organizes about 60 activities per year, right from North Sanich to Sook, and they focus on connecting community members to hands-on environmental education activities. So we're part of the Charity Green Teams of Canada, and some of the activities, we engage our volunteers and include invasive species removal, shoreline cleanups. And these pictures are from events in Callwood. This was at Havenwood Park in Coburg Peninsula. And we also engage in different types of unique activities that are decided on by park staff that, you know, have an idea for an environmental activity that could, you know, need volunteers, and so we rally the community together to do unique activities like build trails, build fences, and so on. Our program is quite unique and innovative, and I love this picture because it really shows the demographic that we've engaged. We're really attracting and engaging a new type of volunteer, often missing in stewardship. So volunteers, a lot of them work full-time, they're full-time students, they have kids, and this is the first time that they've really engaged in an environmental volunteer activity. And so we're really attracting a new type of demographic, because our goal is to really get people outside, connected to the local parks, doing something hands-on that help our communities. And so specifically, since August 2014, the impacts that we've had in Greater Victoria, we've grown to about 2,500 volunteers. We engage about 1,500 people per year. We've run activities, 230 activities, had major impact on local parks. We've been in the news up to 30 times, and so we really are emphasizing the importance of what we're doing, what the community's doing. We've won a number of awards, and I think there's been one added on. So it's really highlighted the impact that we're making on the community and the environment. But specifically, I wanted to highlight and just go through what the last community grant we applied to, what difference that has made in Callwood. So we started at Coburg Peninsula back in June 2017, and we focused on removing Scotch broom and Himalayan blackberry. So with that activity, we engaged 23 volunteers. We removed 10 cubic meters of invasive species from pretty much the entire beach we walked down, about 1,000 square meters of beach. We got a lot of the new growth of Scotch broom, and then we targeted some big patches of broom. The next activity we had was on September 22nd. We focused on removing garbage from Coburg Peninsula that day. There was over 14 volunteers, and we were in the newspaper because of that day particularly, we picked up a lot of cigarette butts. The next activity was at Pit House Park with Dunsmere Middle School, and this has been a couple, several activities we've had with the middle school, and they're really excited to see an opportunity for their local school, walking distance from the school itself, and the teachers are really interested in seeing this program continue. Some of these students have engaged in their local park now a few times, and so they've really seen the difference that they're making, and the goal is to create future stewards, you know, to give that sense of that responsibility that we have to take care of local places. And now with the change of the science curriculum in BC, there's emphasis on place-based learning, outdoor education. So what we're doing is really, really fits into that science curriculum. We were at Havenwood Park with 20 volunteers on March 10th, and we focused on removing lots of plants and lots of invasive species. We collaborated with Friends of Havenwood Park that day and hats. And then we were back at Pit House Park again just this past April 26th. And that day, we had 144 volunteers. 133 of them were from Pit House Park. Jason was there as well. He helped out, and we had a number of volunteers, regular community members. And so we ended up removing 10 cubic meters of invasive Himalayan blackberry. And it's such a great age. The grade sixes and sevens love this type of work. It's hard for them to stop, and they're really excited about continuing to help restore their local park. You can see before and after, because when the students first arrived, it seemed so intimidating all of this broom and all of the blackberry, and so at the end of the day, they really see a difference in how many of them coming together to remove broom and blackberry there. So I'm interested in seeing this program continue. So this is just the overview of our impacts. One thing we do ask our volunteers if they've ever been to that particular park before, if they've ever moved or engaged in that particular activity, and so 50% of them were introduced to that park. There's lots of benefits with having, connecting with our program. We are really increasing opportunities to engage local citizens. We had, I had about 133 out of 264 volunteers are from Callwood. We increased public education around the threats of invasive species. It's really, we built capacity to what park staff can do. We really focus on that volunteer engagement, so we boost capacity for invasive species removal, and we build community. And by supporting our program, you're sending a strong message to thousands of volunteers that this is important to you. We're quite cost-effective as well for what we've done, and we're increasing the exposure of Callwood parks in the medias. So upcoming, so the reason we didn't apply for a grant in the fall because we're still using up funding from the previous grant, it's just the way that our fiscal year set up. And so this past, we just, April 26th was the last activity under the previous grant. So I'm hoping that we can continue to work together and organize a few activities per year. One of the teachers who wasn't able to attend on April 26th hopes to organize another day at Pit House Park on June 19th. So since we're beyond the community grant, I was hoping to talk to you about the potential of engaging with our program again this year. So my goal is to keep working with you. And I'd like to thank you again because the community grant really has enabled us to help your community, so thank you for this opportunity.
Do you have any questions? Any questions to Amanda?
Not really any questions for her, but a couple of comments on the work of the Green Team. They do a fabulous job. I've participated in a few of their events. If you participate in enough events, you get one of those nifty yellow t-shirts.
I think I owe you one now.
But on the latest clearing of Pit House, I had a call from... But on the latest clearing of Pit House, I had a call from a member of the public who doesn't seem to be here tonight, but she was pointing out that the school participation was really nice to see, but Public Works has not yet picked up the broom and blackberry that was trimmed from there, and as she said, it's like 10 cubic meters of it, it's blocking paths, and pickup would be appreciated, so if staff would take a note of that. She also pointed out that we really need a plan for what we are doing in Pit House, where we're going to remove stuff, why. We want to be sure we protect wildlife and bird habitat, just removing all of that stuff is removing habitat for birds and other wild critters. We really need a plan for what to plant and where. So that's something I would like to see the Parks Department come forward with, at least a draft idea of where they want the stuff removed from, and where we're going to replace it, because if we're just going to take everything out and leave a big clear field, it's all going to come back in broom and blackberry, so...
And I can, if I could just, because I have, I did visit the site with Gord, Park Staff, and he did tell us where to work, too. So he, and he has, he's told me that there is plans for replanting, so yeah, I'm not sure that part of it, because we're just told what to do.
The council has not seen those plans, nor has ELSI, so I would appreciate staff getting those plans to both ELSI, their next meeting is in two weeks, I believe, and get their comments, especially, I'm especially concerned about the reduction of habitat without replacing it with anything. Other than that, it's fabulous to see all those volunteers out there, they've done a wonderful job on the spit, also in conjunction with ELSI, I might add, and fantastic job in Havenwood, and Friends of Havenwood are also continuing that work on a weekly basis, so we get fantastic amount of work out of these volunteers, and I think they really deserve public recognition. Thank you.
And I'll say, thanks Amanda, for you and the team, because community-wise, we're better for the work that you, as a number of our environmental groups are doing, so thank you.
Yeah, our goal is to boost capacity for the groups that we work with.
And, and we can talk more about the funding part of that for upcoming time.
Okay, is there a way I can email about that, or?
Uh, yeah, just email into us, and we'll get you sent in the right direction.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thanks. Next on the list, we have Judith Cullington, President of the Wanda Fuga Performing Arts.
Madam Mayor, my presentation's about 10 minutes, is that acceptable?
I think we can get that underway.
Okay, thank you. So, Judith Cullington, I'm Colwood resident, and also President of the Wanda Fuga Performing Arts Centre Society, and I'd also like to recognize a number of our directors and supporters in the audience, David Starks, Lawrence Serge, Duke Lee is hiding in the back somewhere, also Laura Davis, President of the Westshore Arts Council, and a number of other supporters scattered through. So, thank you for the opportunity, this is exciting, feels like kind of moving this forward. And I realized when I put the PowerPoint together, I did not give credit to all of the wonderful illustrations that go through the hits, which are done by our very own Jim Dodd, or ex-very own Jim Dodd. So what I want to cover is basically kind of, talk a little bit about the, our shared goals, give you a bit of an update, talk about what comes next, but spoiler alert, what I really want to talk about is how can we work together, and you'll see that reflected as we go through. So, a lot of talk earlier about the official community plan, there is some wonderful language in there, as far as we're concerned, Colwood's vision and ours align very nicely, working with community groups and residents, supporting the development of an arts and cultural centre that services the entire Westshore. Hi, with that community group, we would really like to work with you. We're also very pleased to see the language around tax incentives for arts and cultural organizations, we would love to take you up on that as we go forward. I also want to take you back to the Colwood Economic Development Plan that was done in 2014, I won't go through the languaging on the side, most of you were there, but I also wanted to remind you about some of the findings out of the Schick Shiner Report, which talked about the anticipated economic benefits, both in construction and ongoing economic benefits. This kind of facility is a real economic magnet, it encourages like-minded businesses to co-locate, and David Starks said if I didn't mention instrument repair shops, he'd kill me. But also demand on local services, things like hotels, restaurants, and other kinds of services, something like this would be a real plus for Colwood. So, just a bit of an update in terms of where we're at, they say it takes 15 to 20 years to do something like this. So here's the really good news, we're in year 16, this has been going on for quite a while. Most of you are familiar, but also for the benefit of folks in the audience who may be less familiar, some of the stages along the way, back in 2007, pardon me, there was a cultural collaboratory that brought together leaders from around the region, the question on the table was, is there a need for a performing arts centre on the Westshore? Big yes. When the high schools were being planned, we worked together with them collaboratively to say, should we do shared theatres between the schools and the community? As we went through that process, it became apparent that the schools would always have precedent, it needed to meet school needs first, and that made it not a good fit for community needs, so we went our separate ways. 2007, the Westshore Chamber of Commerce worked with the Royal Road Student, part of that was a community survey that said to the community, do you think we need a performing arts centre on the Westshore? Big yes. And then kudos to Colwood, they picked up the ball and funded a study by consultant Rick Schick and his team, and it's a very comprehensive report that really kind of outlines a way forward. That then spawned a Colwood committee to lead the process, which then later morphed into our society. And in 2016, we joined with the Westshore Arts Council at their forum, bringing back many of the groups who had expressed an interest in this over the years, and they really reconfirmed their interest and the need to see this happen. I also wanted to touch on the casino, of course, we have new space down there, we did have conversations with them when they were in the development stage, but they're clear and we're clear, that is not a theatre, and it's severely challenged, not only by its very limited access for youth, so still not quite what we're, we're looking for. The Performing Arts Centre Society, we formed back in 2015, and our first major task was to become a charity. That's really important in terms of our ability to do significant fundraising. Part of our other work has been an ongoing site search throughout the Westshore, we've done a lot of talking to and research into other similar kinds of centres to try and kind of learn from every, learn from folks' mistakes and what worked well. We've also been building partnerships and support, especially working with the Westshore Arts Council. In terms of that support, not only support from amongst the community, from amongst the arts organizations, we've also been very fortunate to have quite a bit of pro bono professional support from a number of different individuals, including the architect who built both the Nanaimo Port Theatre and UVIC's Farka Auditorium. He's very excited about a Westshore facility and would love to kind of help us as we work forward here. We've also been talking to potential partners, folks who might be interested in sharing this building with us in some way, trying to keep our MLAs and MPs up to speed, trying to keep local governments in the loop, excuse me, loop, and I should mention that, you know, there are other Westshore municipalities who are also interested in this, just in case you needed a little kind of... This is what is typically, excuse me, this is what's typically referred to as the hockey stick curve, and I think it's a good way of expressing what's been going on here. There's an awful lot of kind of background, foundational, kind of the important busy work that goes on in the background to create that moment where the conditions are right for things to start happening very quickly. I think we are right at that curve, we are ready, we are ready to take off, and we're really looking forward to kind of pushing this forward, and we need to be. There is a really good opportunity coming down the pipe with federal funding infrastructure, significant amounts of money that is going to be coming, happening very soon, and unless we have an identified site, we're going to miss that opportunity. So there is now a sense of urgency around what we're trying to, to do. Just a little bit of background, some of the, some of the things that have changed since the Schick Shiner Report. One is the size of the theatre, Rick talked about 650 seats, our research says, hmm, that's too big, better to go with kind of, more like 350 seats with room to expand as the community grows. Reinforcing that it must be located near services and population centres, it must be a home for arts and culture and not just a theatre, it must be a multipurpose building that fulfills multiple community needs, and it must have a sustainable financial model that's not wholly reliant on funding through taxes. I'm going to say that last one again, because I think it's really important to the folks around the table. One of the things that I heard in the Schick Shiner Report is, great idea, but we really don't like that piece around the kind of the ongoing large chunk of municipal funding. Should you continue to fund arts in the Westshore? Yes, please, keep giving money to these folks here, they're doing a fabulous job, but we need to find a model for the operation of this building that is less reliant on municipal So our vision, and I do not expect you to read the fine print from there, but I know you've got the printed-out version, so our vision, not just a theatre, but a home for arts and culture on the Westshore, many, many, many different forms of arts and cultural expression, very kind of inclusive sort of building. So yes, professional performances, but perhaps more importantly, community theatre, and also opportunities for education and learning of all ages. So what's this going to look like? I have no idea. It's going to depend on the choice of the site, it's going to depend on the needs of those who partner with us, but I want to put forward one kind of concept that we've been, been talking about. So, this is going to need parking, but the interesting thing is that a theatre tends to need parking during the evening, and park and rides tend to need parking during the day. So if this was somewhere in a good location, that it could either add to existing park and ride facilities or replace, that's a good opportunity for this location here. On the ground floor, things like commercial space, gallery, gift shop, restaurant, above that, you've got some of the various facilities, black box theatre, dance studio, teaching space, above that, you've got the theatre and the box office, but you've also got the potential to do something with the airspace above that. So what if there was office space above that? Pick your favorite kind of office space that could, could go in there. What about the opportunity above that of housing, perhaps affordable housing? How can you kind of pull these sort of multiple needs into one space? Where? Good question. We think this is one of the, one of the places in the Westshore that is a very good fit for this kind of facility, it's what I call the golden triangle, so Whale Road, Goldstream Avenue, Island Highway. Why is this a good fit? A number of different reasons, one is, we think it's, it's a good fit for Colwood. Again, it's that economic magic, magnet, magic's a good word, too, a building that really could, you know, you could picture a building that could really create this kind of entrance to the city, this kind of welcome to Colwood, you have arrived, I don't know, this kind of wonderful First Nations mural faces you as you come in. It's, it's an opportunity, as I've mentioned, to kind of add to the, the park and ride opportunities, but really, it's that kind of sense of that kind of presence and gravitas that it would add to, to our downtown. It's got good transit, it's very easily accessible both from downtown and from up island, as well as for Westshore residents, it's got proximity to a number of other facilities that there are good possible synergies with, Westshore Parks and Rec, the seniors centre, Pacific Family Services Centre for Wellbeing, and there are a number of possible sites in that area that, that could, could be a good fit. So where do we go next? The next step is identify the site, identify the site, identify the site. Those other things are important, but they have, the site has to come first. Once we've done that, we need to update the business plan and really make sure it's sound and solid, we need to confirm our partnerships with all of the folks that we're going to be working with in various different ways, we need to start getting into all of the kind of the nitty-gritty of architectural plans and zoning and so on and so forth, and we need to do some very serious and significant fundraising, but we have to get to the site first. So tonight, we're looking for a very clear message from Colwood that you would like to see this facility locate here, this is critical for our fundraising, but also for more. We know that staff are busy, so this is a modest request, so we, and hopefully also with our architect, would really like to meet with staff to kind of sit down, roll up our sleeves, look at possible sites in the, in the city of Colwood, and really get a better understanding of what might be a good fit for us and for the, for the city. As we get further into this, some assistance with the community engagement, whether it's sort of through the Facebook page, information sessions with the public, and we do want lots of community input in this, we know there are lots of good ideas out there, and, you know, we really want to hear what people have to say. Letters of support that we can use for grant applications are going to be really important. We also want to reach out to First Nations, and you're in a position to facilitate that, you have the government-to-government relationship with them, we'd love the kind of the introduction, both with the Skymorton Songies, to kind of say, are they, are they interested in this? Would they, would they like to be part of this process? Potential for tax incentives, yes please, and then anything else that, that we can co-create as we go forward with this. There is a letter that's next on your agenda, and I hope that as a part of your discussion, you're going to be able to pass a motion, or might break it into two motions, something along the lines of, that Colwood Council supports the development of a Westshore Arts and Cultural Centre in Colwood, and that Council directs staff to meet with the Wanda Fuga Performing Arts Centre Society during June 2008, to identify suitable sites for the arts and cultural centre. Again, that kind of sense of urgency from us. And then perhaps as we go forward, bring it back to Committee of the Whole or some similar structure for more input and discussion. Again, some lovely pictures from Jim Dodd for you to look at while you fire me with questions, and if I can't answer them, I get to point to them.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'm very intrigued with your sustainable financial model that doesn't require great infusions of public money, can you point to any centre that's actually achieved that?
Yes, the model that we've been looking at in particular is the one that Pacific Family Services has been using for their Centre for Wellbeing. What they did is they own a facility, but they use only part of it for their own needs, and what they're doing is renting out some of the remaining space, and that's really helping to be an important part of their, covering off their operating costs.
Thank you. As, as far as Council endorsing the idea that we want this centre, I would really like to see some public input on that first, and I guess to get that kind of meaningful input, we're going to need some sort of estimate of costs, so looking forward to seeing where we can go with that.
Counselor Day?
Do you want to quickly put that out for us? So, in, in terms of, of public input, that has already happened, Council and Alt, obviously the kind of, some of the pieces that I pointed to leading up to this, there was the Arts Forum in 2016, and there's going to be another one this year in June, and again, that's going to be an opportunity, Westshore Arts Council have a survey out on their website, and one of the questions they're asking people is, do you want to see a performing arts centre in the Westshore?
Yes, and are you asking also, how much would you be willing to pay for the centre?
There is a question. There's something I would like to add. Say it again?
There is a question. We have to ask that question.
Counselor Day?
I'm curious how, you said number one was to identify the site, but it kind of becomes the chicken and the egg thing, right? You need the money to get the site, you usually have to not really tell every, the world that you're looking at a site in order for the money not to instantly hit the ceiling. So how are you going to identify the site?
Lovely question, thank you. So, you'll notice that I very carefully didn't talk about any particular site in the meeting tonight, and that is why I want to see us have a kind of a roll-up-the-sleeves meeting with, with staff, they have a much better idea, obviously, than we do of some of the sites that might be available, some of the folks that might be interested. If there's anybody listening in the audience that has a site that they might wish to, to talk to us about, please feel free. So it is, it is going to be a bit of a, it is going to be a bit of an iterative process. Yes, there is the, the challenge that, you know, unfortunately, we don't have a bank account that seizes buying land, having said that, if we can properly identify the site and put a retainer on it, then I think we can do that fundraising to purchase land.
Okay. So I guess my, my next question is, are you willing to partner then on that same model as Pacific Center did, with potentially a landowner, in order to achieve their wants and desires on the site as well as your own?
Yeah, I think that's where there's a lot of interesting possibilities, I mean, one of the, the conversations that we've had along the way, and, and, you know, I'm not sure where this will land in the end, but one of the conversations we had, for example, was, was with McColler Housing, and they said, hey, you know, we'd be a great partner, we'd, we'd take the airspace, they can bring money to the table, as well as development experience. take the airspace, they can bring money to the table as well as development experience, we can bring different pieces to the table. So, yes, absolutely yes to partnerships.
And have, pardon me, have you had any discussions with CRD Housing?
We have not at this moment in time. But it would certainly be on the list. Greater Victoria Housing Society is the other group we have had a conversation with. Anybody else?
I know that I'm going to support it all going forward and whatever, so I think there needs to get that collaboration and start on things to see where best suits and fits in to the overall plan, so looking forward to seeing what you can do.
Councillor Logan?
Thank you, Worship. I think it's already been mentioned tonight that this is intriguing. I think it's been refined over the years and with new ideas, new prospects coming forward, so I think it's worthwhile in pursuing, quite frankly. And so I would like to move that we refer this to staff to engage with your group and to bring back a report to a future Committee of the Whole meeting.
I don't know if that gets you into your next agenda item, and seconder on that?
Oh, I'll second, I'm sure.
Any further discussion? Call question, all those in favour? Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you. And I think that that kind of takes into consideration the letter as well, that was in correspondence that had that asked, so we've jumped into that one all at once. So the second item under correspondence, folks, is a letter that we received from Union of British Columbia Municipalities. It was the response in regards to the resolution that we had put forward through AVICC and subsequently UBCM around provincial assistance to attract doctors. The news recently, last week, says 200 new practitioners and nurse practitioners coming to the province, so the information said has been listened to and is being worked on. So I know our South Vancouver Island folks are quite excited about the prospects. Councillor Day?
Thank you. The one thing that the response didn't address is the position that West Shore municipalities find themselves in, that we are neither an urban city nor are we a rural municipality that is getting targeted assistance. So in some ways, we get left out of the picture. So I would very much like to follow up with the South Vancouver Island Physicians Association to see what we can do, simply because I, like many other people in the West Shore, phoned to make an appointment with my daughter, and it's getting increasingly difficult. Today, the first appointment you can get with my particular doctor is three weeks away. And that was the comment from the receptionist, was it's getting harder and harder to book these doctors because they're so full. And so I think that many areas of Victoria are experiencing that, but it's been particularly difficult for families in the West Shore to find doctors that aren't, you know, 45 minutes away in order to see them.
Thank you. Motion to receive?
Second.
All those in favour? Opposed, motion carried. New business, first item is protective services and fire dispatch contract execution.
Your Worship, this particular issue came before council approximately a month, or I guess, I guess it was close to two months ago now. We've completed negotiations with Suri Fire Dispatch, and they have been extremely diligent in taking care of all of the technical aspects of connecting the five communities to Suri Fire Dispatch. And we're now comfortable and confident in making this recommendation to council tonight to proceed with awarding the contract.
Recommendations? Councillor Day?
I, oh, I'm sorry.
Just, I was just looking for it. I did receive an email from a member of the public discussing, I guess a few people have gotten together looking at the many different options that have been brought up, both at the CRD and through Sanich, et cetera, noting that maybe we're not saving as much money as we've identified in our report. And I just wanted to say that we did receive it, and that when I looked at the numbers, I didn't find that they lined up necessarily with what I had received. I can't find the, I have too many emails to find it, but I'll keep looking while other people are talking, and then I'll bring it back for your information. Just, I felt that it, since we'd received the input, it was worthy of noting that we had received some input.
If the date helps, it was May 24th? I'm going to give councillor Day a moment to see if she can find that.
I believe the original report said a savings of $132,000 over the five-year term, and the new report says 400,000, is that correct? So Colwood would be saving 400,000 over the five-year term of this contract, that is a lot of money.
Your Worship, if I can just address that, when we went out to RFP, we weren't, there was some of the numbers that we were asked to provide, we did not collect, so we had to take a best guess. And between the previous staff report where we had suggested that it might go down lower, we then were able to get a better handle on the after-hours non-emergency calls, which is specifically the issue that we weren't clear about. And once we reported on those new numbers, we asked Suri to adjust our contract amount, and that's why it had gone down so much. So it's more reflective of what our peers like North Sanich, Sydney, Squamawt, what their call volume was like in the non-emergency after-hours calls.
Is that enough information, councillor Noll? Perfect. Councillor Day, return?
So the email was from James Anderson and Colin Nielsen, sent on Thursday, and councillor Logan, you were quoted in the email as well, from the crest point of view, and they are suggesting that we should have a second look to confirm if the scale of our savings are as dramatic as has been suggested. So I'm fairly confident that the savings that we're reporting on here are what our actual savings are going to be, and I had just wanted to make sure that everyone was aware that we had received that input and that we weren't ignoring it, but that we are confident that our staff have given us the correct numbers, and there are significant savings for the city of Colwood to move ahead with Suri at this time.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you, I'll move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favour? Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Next item is noise, under TPI, 7.2, 7.21, report on request for waiver of noise bylaw. Bad Angels Productions is doing a film production at Hatley Castle.
Thank you, your Worship. A permit application has been received to carry out filming at Hatley Castle. Due to the hours of filming, the company is seeking council resolution, recommend relaxation to the noise bylaw.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you, through the mayor to staff for questions. Would, and obviously this is a hypothetical one, but if this was happening in the municipality of Colwood and not at Royal Roads, would we receive any financial remuneration that's in addition to what we're not receiving by it happening at Royal Roads? The reason I bring up the question is, we're relaxing our bylaws, or our noise bylaw, but residents at Belmont Park, residents on the Lagoon, those are the people who are impacted, but there's no financial benefit to the city for doing that. So I'm just trying to understand, would we receive any benefit outside of the permit if it was happening in Colwood versus happening at Royal Roads?
No.
No, none?
No.
Okay.
Not in the bylaw. Councillor Day?
I noted in reading the report that the noise is, well, it's not completely inconvenient, but it will be inconvenient to our neighbours in that it's the running of a generator, and, you know, it's quite different than when we had the helicopters, or when there was loud explosions in the street in Vancouver, when I was there for UBCM and they were filming with Harrison Ford. So on the scale of things, this is on the not-so-bad end, and I think that there is a lot to be said for using any number of wonderful filming locations in Colwood because it does bring film crews out and it does provide employment in our region. So that is a good thing overall, and hopefully it isn't terribly inconvenient for the neighbours who will have to listen to the generator running on those nights.
Councillor Noll?
Yes, I noticed the report carries a notification map that completely ignores all of Belmont Park. I can hear the peacocks in Royal Roads from my place in Belmont Park, I'm wondering why Belmont Park is not included in the notification area, and if we do vote on this, I would ask that Belmont Park be added as part of the notification area.
So basically, the notification area is 300 metres around the centre, so just for consideration, we notified the additional area as indicated on the map, just because we were concerned that the noise could create an issue for the neighbours, but we could always extend that into the other direction of Belmont Park.
I'm sorry, I don't see how notifying all the way to Lagoon Road is any closer to that filming site, which is not really clear on the map where exactly the filming site is, because it's on a topographical map and not a street map. But I'm sure that John Stubbs School and Belmont Park is considerably closer than Lagoon Road to that, to the castle. So I just don't see that the notification areas are good enough. Yeah, the map is totally useless. I mean, where is that on the campus? I assume the inlet is Colwood Creek, but that's an assumption, I don't know the topography quite well enough to figure that out.
I'm just wondering for ease of that. I know when DND is doing any warnings or announcements, whatever, we get a courtesy email through just to let our office staff know, should they get any calls or inquiries, that the noise is related to some exercise or something that they've got going on. Just wondering if maybe that might be something that our communications department might be able to fit in and just as a courtesy, let them know that there is an event going on and what's going on, just for ease of their minds as well.
Councillor Day?
Just, is there any reason why we wouldn't let Belmont Park know? I think it's easy enough for us to identify here, it's a, all of Squamawt Lagoon is a big bowl, and you can hear things a very long way away from many events that go on. I've had the strangest noise complaints when Rock the Shores was on, people who were over by the Church of the Advent would have phoned me. So it just depends on so many factors, how the wind is blowing, et cetera. But I'd, I just, if there's no problem, let's just notify Belmont Park area as well, and that should take care of the problem, and it could inform us in our future notifications for Hatley Castle, I think, quite well.
We can, do you need a motion, or you can take that as direction?
We can take that as direction.
Okay. Yep. Okay, so there is a motion there, folks, can I have somebody?
I'll move the recommendation, your Worship.
Seconder?
Second.
All those in favour? Opposed, motion carries, thank you. Moving into bylaws this evening, there are a few before us. 8.1, final reading for bylaw number 1723, Nob Hill Road closure disposition bylaw.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favour? Opposed, motion carried. The following ones were the ones that did have first, second, and third written on them, but the actual bylaw had final, so it has been corrected on our agendas to read final in all instances. So we are looking at bylaw number 1727, final reading.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favour? Opposed, motion carried. 8.3, bylaw number 1728, final reading.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favour? Opposed, motion carried. 8.4, bylaw number 1729, final reading.
Move final.
Second.
It's the Gordy and Robb Show!
Opposed, motion carried. Bylaw number 1730, final reading. All those in favour? Opposed, motion carried. And finally, final reading for bylaw number 1731, West Shore Parks and Recs Recreation Fees and Charges bylaw.
Move final.
Second.
All those in favour? Opposed, motion carried. No resolutions of release out of in camera.
Move adjournment.
All those in favour? Opposed, motion carried. Thank you.